Thank you. And that was Ji-Hoo Lee, thank you very much, it was beautiful. So, I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And we're going to have our invocation by Lead Pastor John Ruhlman of Sandals Church. Pastor John, how are you? And the flag salute will be led by Councilmember Nigar, so if you'll all please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father, we pause to give you glory. In a nation where freedom was so important to our fathers and our forefathers, God, freedom and the worship of you, knowing who you are, is still important to us today. God, let us take a moment and recognize that, give us wisdom, give our city leaders and our citizens wisdom as we work through the issues. We pray this, asking all these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. If you turn and face the flag with me, recognize the principles from which it stands, and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you Pastor, thank you Councilmember Nigar. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comachero is absent. Councilmember Nigar?
I'm here, and so is Mr. Washington.
Councilmember Roberts? Councilmember Washington?
As he pointed out, I'm here.
Here twice.
Here Edwards.
Here, thank you. And I know we have public comments this evening, so I'll go ahead and read. A total of thirty minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. So, could we have the first speaker, please?
Dr. George Rombach, to be followed by Patrice Lines.
Good evening, Dr. Rombach, how are you?
Just fine, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. New topic for my public comments. Traffic, which has been an increasing issue in the city. And a pet peeve is total ignorance of, by certain members, of the traffic laws, almost to a disregard of life and liberty. It's been increasingly disturbing me until a couple evenings ago. I was on Inez, going to cross the signal at, uh, um, what, uh, what is it right there?
Rancho Cal- Rancho California Road?
Rancho California, thank you, pardon my lapse in my aging memory. I was third in line. Light turned green, as I was due to go north over, across the intersection. First two cars had to wait up, because the tail ends on, uh, going way past the yellow. After the first two cars went through, I looked up the hill and said, "That guy's not gonna stop." And I put the brakes on, as a car coming down Inez made the left turn across the traffic that had the green light. If I hadn't stopped, I might have interfered with his interference, uh, his progress across the intersection. That intersection, in particular, especially if you northbound on Inez in the evening, and a couple others, I've noticed where people have been in wanton disregard for the life of other traffic members. And I do think we ought to explore the possibility of a greater consequence. If you're gonna take a vehicle down there and operate it as if you were standing on the corner with a Smith &amp; Wesson .38 and just randomly shooting at people, I mean, it really isn't much difference. That's basically a weapon, that you're propelling over the roadway. And if you don't abide by the traffic rules, everyone else is seriously in jeopardy. And if you're conducting yourself in a manner that doesn't even take the rights of others in session, I don't think it should just be a traffic ticket. I would, I need to explore the possibility, and I will be back to the city council to lay out some possibilities of how an increased penalty for disregard of life and liberty of others can be taken into effect. I would hope, I know the city has a camera system. I would hope the city council would commission the staff to make a record of some of these activities.
You need to summarize, Mr. Rombach.
And, uh, in terms of being able to proceed further with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Patrice Lines, to be followed by Sarah Mason.
Hi, good evening. I recently became aware that you've been fined by the Fair FPPC $4,000 for some brochures which were sent out by the CSD, Jeff Comachero in particular. And my question is, I saw that in this check run, you have $4,000 check to the FPPC. Why are we paying for that, exactly? Why isn't Jeff paying for that? And how much any attorney's fees have we paid for this negotiated settlement? And do we have to pay for that as well? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to address that, please?
The proposed order with the FPPC was addressed to the city, and it did not separate out a particular liability for Councilmember Comachero or the city. And so, that is why it is appropriate for the city to pay it. Additionally, the work that was done was done by the city staff, and not Mr. Comachero personally. Additionally, we, we, I don't have an exact amount of the attorney's fees involved in this, but it was fairly minimal.
This was actually a flyer that was, or a printed material that was sent out by the city to advertise for Community Services Department. And a lot of you may not realize, but the city isn't allowed to include any council members' names or photographs on anything that is mailed from the city, because it's considered an inappropriate use of taxpayer dollars. So, this flyer went out accidentally, and it had Councilmember Comachero's picture in it, and a letter to the residents from him, or a note from him. And so, it hasn't happened previously. And so, we, you know, were contacted by the FPPC, and we said, "Yeah, we did it. We're sorry we did it," and we paid the fine. Those things happen, and that's about all there is to it, so. So, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next speaker, please.
Sarah Mason, to be followed by Amy Bruin.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Sarah Mason, I'm with the American Cancer Society, Relay for Life of Temecula. The Relay for Life has been started, has been going since 1985. It's the American Cancer Society's signature fundraising event. American Cancer Society has been around for this year, it'll be 101 years. The money that we raise at Relay for Life of Temecula goes towards programs and services for cancer patients and their families, as well as research. These programs and services are invaluable to many cancer patients that don't have the resources needed to help them during their cancer journey. There are over 5,000 Relay for Lives nationwide, and currently, we have one for, I believe, this is the 10th year in the city of Temecula. So, I would like to invite you all to join us and raise money in the fight against cancer. We just recently, on Friday evening, held a student-led event at Gray Oak High School. And we, the students planned and orchestrated their own event, and they raised over $4,800. So, very proud of those students. And last year, the city of Temecula's Relay for Life raised over $28,000.
Wow, that's great.
So, we'd like to invite you to join us, and at least come out and see what Relay for Life is all about.
And when is it?
It is May 17th.
There you go.
Yes, thank you. At Temecula Valley High School, it starts at 9:00 a.m. Relay for Life is a 24-hour event, and we walk the track. It's a relay, so somebody from your team is walking the track throughout the 24 hours. We're also here tonight to ask you about Paint the Town Purple. And Tina Mendoza would like to talk to you a little bit about that.
Hi Tina.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I am involved with Relay for Life, because I am a cancer survivor. We are looking for support from the city to paint our town purple, meaning that we would like to get our flyers and our information out there, so that the community will know all of the programs and all the services that are provided to them by the American Cancer Society. So, we would really like to invite you to participate in that with us, as well as invite you, like Sarah said, to our event coming up on May 17th at Temecula Valley High School.
At 9:00 a.m.
At 9:00 a.m., thank you so much.
Thank you.
And hello, Mayor, and councilmembers, and of course, all of the staff here tonight. And many of you know me, Amy Bruin, on behalf of Bruins, founded in 2010 in honor of my father, who passed from cancer. And so, when I heard about this, I'd actually just announced at one of our previous meetings that I'm expanding our support of the American Cancer Society, and really rededicating the company not only on behalf of my father, but my best friend, and all of those impacted by cancer. So, when, of course, this came to my attention, you know, I knew that our company was going to get behind it. So, we've decided to paint our trolley purple. So, we won't actually be wrapping the trolley completely in purple. That was a little logistical impossibility for us. But we will be, of course, supporting the Relay for Life in Temecula. And of course, a perfect opportunity to see the trolley purple will be on Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00 as the Bruins runs the Old Town Trolley in downtown Temecula. We've got banners that we're going to basically do up, as well as ribbons on the windows. And I know part of painting the town purple that they, you know, we'd all love to see is just purple ribbons wrapped around, wrapped around all of the lamp posts, you know, and of course, they'll be wrapped around all of the trolley. So, it'll be quite the sight to see and a lot of fun, and of course, supporting an incredible cause. April is National Cancer Control Month, and so, that's the perfect opportunity for us to, you know, really dig in and show our support. And we'll be supporting, of course, the Marietta Relay for Life as well, because we're all about unity here in our community. So, thank you very much for your time. I do invite you all to ride the Old Town Trolley, as well as support the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Next speaker.
The final speaker under public comment is Ernie White.
Mr. White?
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Hi.
I'd like to actually change subjects today. I was at the airport just recently on a business trip, and something happened. It was really interesting. On one of my, on one of my Southwest flights, one of our fallen soldiers was being taken off one of the Southwest Airlines. And what was interesting was the whole airport. Republicans, Democrats, independents, liberals, conservatives, all ran to the window. And there was nothing but silence. My flight was from Sacramento all the way to Washington State. And that flight was silent. I mean, nobody could speak. It just reminded us how lucky, how grateful, how thankful we need to be for living in such a great country. Living in a peaceful country, peaceful nation, and having men and women who put their lives on the line for us, give us the opportunity to speak, as we're doing here tonight. I was hoping, Madam Mayor, that we could just take maybe 20 seconds and just think about our fallen soldiers, and even the people that are still there, our soldiers, our men and women who are still fighting, if that'd be okay with you?
Share your time.
I'd like to take my 20 seconds for those fallen soldiers, and for those that are still there. The kid's name who came off that plane, his name was Connor. I'd like to say, "God bless him, God bless all our men and women in uniform," thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. And that was our final speaker. All right, then we will move on to city council reports, and Mr. Washington's in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple items tonight, but before I get to that, I wanted to request that the city manager look into the city providing some sort of support for the Relay for Life by way of promotion via the city's outreach efforts. If maybe we can craft something similar to what we've done for a couple of other events, sort of an in-kind support. I know the event would benefit greatly from that. Just the exposure that we can give them through the city's website and Facebook page. But maybe you can bring that back for the council's approval.
We can prepare that for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
The second item, my wife asked me to bring this to everyone's attention. She has a friend who, I believe, is on this show. The name of the show is called Sheer Madness.
I know that show.
It's spelled S-H-E-A-R.
Yeah.
And it says here that it's on National Geographic. It takes us on a journey of a city girl-turned-sheep farmer named Natalie Redding, as she juggles her many farm animals and her family of five children with her husband Sean. Says that Natalie relies on her 200 animal flock, shearing their wool for profit, with her Mr. Mom Husband Sean at her side. Natalie balances her farm business and deals with the daily impacts it has on her family. But it's a risky trade, as one wrong decision could not only kill an animal, but kill their business. The show is filmed right here in Temecula, out on Deportola Road. And, and I thought it might be of interest for some of our residents who would like to maybe record it. It comes on on Saturdays on National Geographic at 10:00 p.m. And I don't know if that's 10:00 p.m. local or eastern, which would make it 7:00 o'clock here, so. Wanted to make everyone aware of that. Sheer Madness. The final item that I wanted to address. In 1990, the United States Congress designated March 25th of each year as National Medal of Honor Day, a day that is dedicated to all Medal of Honor recipients. It was on March 25th, 1863, when the first Medal, Medals of Honor were presented. Secretary of War Edwin Stanton presented Medals of Honor Army to six members of Andrews Raiders for their volunteering and participation during the American Civil War raid in April 1862. Created in 1861, the Medal of Honor is the United States of America's highest military honor. It is awarded only to U.S. military personnel by the President of the United States in the name of Congress for personal acts of valor above and beyond the call of duty. There are three versions of the medal, one for the Army, one for the Navy, and one for the Air Force, with personnel of the Marine Corps and the Coast Guard receiving the Navy version. Since its creation, there have been 3,468 Medals of Honor awarded to the country's soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and Coast Guardsmen. I hope that we all honor those recipients today, and when we get to the end of the meeting, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the name of the Medal of Honor.
All right. That's wonderful, thank you. Mr. Nigar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, my voice is failing me. I'm getting what's going around. Yes. Just three quick items. First, I'm glad Councilmember Washington brought up the issue regarding the Relay for Life. There's probably not a person in this room who hasn't been touched by cancer, and so, to the degree that we can support that, I certainly would like to look into that as well. Couple of other things. Next Wednesday, on April 2nd, the Southwest Riverside Autism Task Force is gonna meet right here. That includes elected officials from eight of our local cities, talking about updating each other, what each is doing in their respective cities in relation to the epidemic that's autism. And then, we're gonna adjourn that meeting at about 6:30, and we'll convene out front on the steps of City Hall, where we'll proceed to light up City Hall Blue. So, we invite everybody out there for that, and typically, it's really good turnout. I believe there'll be refreshments and some speakers, and so, I invite you out to do that. Also, I've had the honor of being invited to talk at what is known as the Fred Conference. What Fred stands for fails me right now, but it's a conference on speaking on matters of disabilities. And the honor comes in, I've been invited to speak to talk about what the city of Temecula has done for those citizens in our community that have special needs or that are disabled. And Fred is a conference that is nationwide, and this year, it's being held in Los Angeles. And they talk about things such as job creation, housing, and another employment needs for the special needs community. So, I'll report back, thank you. Farms and ranches enabling people with disabilities. Thank you, Ms. Edwards, you're quick on the draw with your iPhone. So, I'll report back how that goes. I get to participate in a very distinguished panel, and I kind of feel honored to be there. So, I'll represent the city well and let you know how it goes.
Do they want a Temecula's?
Well, the question they're asking of me is exactly that. They're saying, "How, how, we are so impressed with what you have done, Temecula, that we want to know, how can we influence other communities to do the same thing? What is your model?" And so, I am just so proud, taking materials and slides and showing them what we have accomplished and what we can do. And not just us as a council, it's important to note, we sit up here, we come up with ideas and decisions, but our staff implements these things, and the community takes the ball and runs with it. So, it's not any one person or any one city doing something, it really truly is teamwork. So, I'm excited, because lastly, we're working on job creation, not only for our youth, but also youth and non-youth in the disabled, special needs community. But I want to expand that to start looking at housing as well, because it's very difficult for folks in that capacity to find housing. So, I'll report back how it goes, and hopefully, I can get some ideas from other panel members.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And along those lines, staff brought me this today. As you know, I mentioned at the last council meeting that when Council, or Mayor Potem Comachero and I attended a summit of the Gary Sinise Foundation, and it was to address the issues that are faced by returning veterans with disabilities. When's it come back from Iraq, and who have suffered disabilities as a result of their service? And so, the city has a Veterans Resources Guide, and it's really quite comprehensive. It covers employment, education, housing, medical, support organizations, community, special events, VA benefits, honor, the way that they're honored, and then points of contact. And so, we're in the process right now, staff is in the process of putting all of this online to make available, and this will be the thing that we are compiling to send back to the Gary Sinise Foundation, along with a written strategic plan on exactly what you just talked about. How we really crafted our outreach of support for military families in much the same way that we've done for people with disabilities. And really, everything that we do in Temecula is done via a plan that we can follow and carry out. And it's easy that way for the community to get a buy-in for that plan. So, anyway, kudos to staff. I know this has been put together for a while, but it's really tremendous. And the fact that we're now gonna get it up online, and are also creating the white paper to go along with it, that's really terrific. So, I know that they're gonna be amazed that it's happening so quickly. Well, they probably won't be amazed, but, so, we really appreciate it. All right, so, Mr. Robert, welcome back. Anything to report from the nation's capital?
Yes?
Well, push your button then, let's hear it. You gotta give a report, we gotta put you to work here.
I didn't even know I was on there. Anyway, I can tell you, it was very cold.
Yes.
And the day before, the snow stopped, the day after I left, the snow started again.
You see, you're just a rainbow.
It's the first, it's actually the first time in twenty-some years that I've gone to DC at that time of the year, which is March, and see as many snowbanks as was there.
I've never seen snow.
They have been hammered, and when it snows in DC, everything stops. It wasn't, it wasn't my best trip, it was cold, but, you know, last year, I served as the Chair of the National League of Cities Transportation Committee. And this year, it was much different, where I got to sit back in the audience and listen. And NLC, National League of Cities, really is pushing transportation now. We're so far behind in getting funding with all of our states. And, you know, you hear complaints from our citizens about traffic, and they're going too fast, and traffic seems to be slowing down, and it is, it is. The federal government is not pushing money out. Like in California, we have the self-help communities and counties where we tax ourselves. That's the only way we are ahead right now. Other states don't have that, they have to depend on the federal government. It's just not working, it's just not working, so. It didn't sound too good. There was a lot of rhetoric, of course, because around election time, when it starts, that everything, you know, what is said, but it has no backing, because the money's not there in the budget. It's frustrating, it really is, because the federal government doesn't listen to the cities and the states about what needs to be done. They just go on their merry way, spending federal money for other things. And of course, I could mention our governor wanting to build a, almost a billion-dollar high-speed rail. The rail goes nowhere, from nowhere. And that would pay for a lot of roads. I look forward to what's gonna happen up to the next election. I think that we really need to look at a high-speed rail in the middle of farmland. It doesn't go from San Francisco to Los Angeles, which it probably should. It starts in the middle and goes about 70 or 80 miles each way in farmland. So, yes, I'm frustrated.
Yeah.
If I would've heard some good news this year, it would've been better, but it was pretty bleak, pretty bleak. And I'm sorry to say that, but we need to get our act together, and actually get probably some new people in office who listen to us, because right now, they are not listening to us. So, I'm sorry for that report, but...
Well, on that happy note...
I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is.
I'm glad I asked. Okay, let's move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, results of the asset transfer review of the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. And I'm gonna want to comment on that one. Number five, support for HR 3978 Sires, the New Opportunities for Bicycle and Pedestrian Infrastructure Financing Act, at the request of Mayor Potem Comachero and Councilmember Roberts. And I know we have requests to speak on that item. Support for SB 69 Roth and AB 1521 Fox Vehicle License Fee Adjustment, at the request of Councilmember Washington. Number seven, management compensation plan and employ- Number seven, management compensation plan and employee computer purchase program. Number eight, city classification plan update. Number nine, purchase of fifty HP desktop computers. Number ten, establishing fees for taxi cab permits. Number eleven, City of Temecula Monument Sign at Mercedes-Benz of Temecula, easement and funding. Number twelve, Second Amendment with KTU plus A for Phase Two of the Multi-Use Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan Update, and I know we have requests to speak on that item as well. Number thirteen, payment of the City of Temecula's share of the regional municipal stormwater permit for the Santa Margarita watershed for fiscal year 2013-14. Number fourteen, city consent for professional hospital supply to transfer the 2007 Operating Covenant Agreement to Medline Industries. And so, I would like to accept a motion, and I want to comment on number four, and we have comments on, which one's twelve? And...
We have eleven requests to speak, we have comments on three, and then we have one speaker requesting on five, and then we have six speakers requesting the combined five and twelve.
Five and twelve, so, okay, so, we want to pull five and twelve.
Two speakers on six.
Really? Okay.
One speaker on item nine.
Okay.
And that's everything.
All right, so then, comment on four. We're going to pull five, six, nine, and twelve, is that correct?
And item three.
Oh, item three.
So, three, five, six, nine, and twelve.
Five, nine, and twelve, okay. So, I would accept a motion to move the balance.
So, moved.
Anyone awake for a second?
Second.
Okay, for motion and a second, and cast your votes, and I want to comment on number four. Well, let me do that now. Results of the Asset Transfer Review of the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. And if I could have, please, just the briefest comment from staff, just to give the good news.
We recently received the results of a review that was conducted by the State Controller's Office regarding the former redevelopment agency, and all redevelopment agencies had to undergo a review of the asset transfers that were made between January 1st of 2011 through January 31st, 2012. And I'm pleased to announce that our audit of those asset transfers showed that we were in compliance with state law, and they found no findings to report in the audit.
All right, so, that is great news, clean audit by the state. All right, so, now we can cast our votes.
Madam Mayor?
Ma'am?
Ernie White has asked if he can speak on item four.
All right, well, we just, yeah, we already voted. Did he just file a speaker slip?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. White, we've already voted on it. Okay, so, all right, the item passed, so now we're going to pull item three, and that's listed demands, and you have a speaker on that, and I don't know if there are any staff report we can give on it.
Speaker.
Yep.
And that speaker is Ernie White?
Okay, Mr. White. Sorry, we were quick on the button there.
No, you jumped, you went from one to four. You're doing like, I can't see it. We'll get in trouble. I have a problem with this check that we're going to write. It's going to be for the traffic study for the Shear Water Creek, I like to call it the Quicksand Creek, because that's exactly what we're going to try to build 2,000 units on, quicksand. It's called a liquefaction zone, and liquefaction is quicksand. If you look at Washington State, you notice that we have a lot of citizens who are missing because they have sunk in what is called liquefaction. Liquefaction is quicksand. The Shear Water Project is going to be built on liquefaction. You have two problems here, liquefaction, and you also have the problem that the hills may slide down. This is a liquefaction zone. Temecula tried to build a train many years ago in that area. That's what happened to the train, it happened twice. The Indians told the white man, "Don't build your train there," but we did it anyway. I'm not white, of course, but they did it anyway, and the train sunk twice in the liquefaction zone. This is the same zone you want to put 2,000 units, tens of thousands of low-income people. That is atrocious, that is sickening, and that should not happen. This traffic study should be pulled, we should not be building in Shear Water what I call Quicksand Creek. You know it's Quicksand Creek, it's a liquefaction zone. As a matter of fact, on your own website, if you look at your safety zone on your website and your safety manual, you actually have this site listed, that no people should be allowed on it because it is quicksand. It is already a liquefaction zone. I would ask that we stop trying to stack and pack people in liquefaction areas, and especially low-income, and these will be extremely low-income people called ELI. I would ask that we stop trying to pack these people in liquefaction zones. This is an earthquake fault line, by the way, earthquake fault line, you're packing between two earthquake fault lines. If those faults ever rumble, and they will someday, the middle of those faults will be liquefaction, that area will turn to basically quicksand. It may be steady now, but it will be quicksand. Last, on this subject, the water department already stated, in this area, the water department has already stated that there is no water there. So, their deal with the city is, "We will give you water, but you must tear down and plug up every water well that's on that land." Why would we start tearing up wells? Why would we tear down water wells? This is nuts. So, again, we're going to pack people on liquefaction, which is quicksand, we've got the possibility of mudslides, and the water department says, it does say that, the water department says, "We'll give you water, but you've got to tear up all the wells."
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you very much, Mayor Edwards.
Next speaker? That would be...
So, it'd be Ernie White for item five?
Okay.
Support for HR 3978 Sires, the New Opportunities for Bicycle and Pedestrian Infrastructure Financing Act.
Yes, thank you. I would like to ask you that you do not support this bill. This bill is going to tie us down to more legislation, more government, this bill is not good. I'll tell you why. It's all connected to the sustainable city, it's all connected to smart growth, and every dollar that we take, there is something attached to it, a commitment by us to continue to stack and pack. When you pass these bills, and this is not you, this is with Congress, but we're saying we want to support it, when we pass these bills, these are stack and pack bills, these are smart growth bills. And what's funny is, Councilmember Roberts even explained that, right now, all these governments, these local governments are all being dependent on the federal government. Well, we've done the exact same thing here. We've been dependent on WR COG, Western Riverside Council of Governments, and SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. We've taken mega millions. That's why you see so much traffic all over this community, because we're stacking and packing as many apartment complexes as we can, and as I said before, we're building them on liquefaction zones. We've run out of place, run out of space, so now we're stacking and packing you wherever we can. What we should be doing is try to have more open space. So, I would urge you to not support this bill. I don't know if you've read this bill, but this bill is one of the worst liberal global warming bills that you can support, and it's going to put this city and all the other cities in this nation under more government scrutiny. And the more money you take, the more you owe this government. We're trying our best to get from underneath this government. I'm telling you, we could have a better city right now, Councilmember Roberts, if we, the people, would just get away from these regional governments and start focusing on our local government. I'll tell you right now, I'd rather pay higher taxes right now if you guys would just break the biblical cord with WR COG and SCAG. Just break it. It's not that hard. Stop this smart growth nonsense. This bill is all about looking like Germany, looking like Europe, having little bike paths everywhere so somebody can get hurt, having no more cars, no more cars. And I've talked about this a year ago, the fee per mile is coming. They are, it's already on Steinberg's desk in Sacramento, the fee per mile.
Thirty seconds.
Ladies and gentlemen, in Temecula and all over this country, you better wake up fast, they're going to pass the fee per mile. It's on Steinberg's desk in Sacramento, he's just waiting for the right opportunity to give it to the governor, and then everybody and all these city councils are going to make more money because they can charge you for every mile you drive. So, wake up. Vote no on this bill, don't support it, it's a liberal bill, horrible bill, and I love liberals, but don't support it.
Thank you.
The next six speakers have asked to speak on items five and twelve.
All right, five and twelve jointly at the same time? Okay, so their comments are applicable to both five and twelve?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so, would you call the first speaker, please?
I believe it's George Nada, to be followed by Rex Roberson.
Madam Mayor, it's George Niota. I guess I write terribly. Really, my comments, I'm going to defer my comments on five, but I just want to speak on item number twelve and just commend the city for what they're doing to continue the dedication to the Quality of Life Master Plan that they've put in place to 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rex Roberson, to be followed by Rick Vanderlinden.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Edwards, Councilmembers, City Staff and Residents. My name is Rex Roberson, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of bicycle safety and the addition of trails for cyclists in the area. My family and I both are all avid cyclists, I'm a racer, support local trail growth and safety, and I just want to support and/or say that I appreciate all the work that the council's done and some of the community service groups have done in moving that forward. So, I'm here to encourage that the city support HR 3978, and also encourage the approval of the Second Amendment to the agreement, so.
Thank you.
Rick Vanderlinden, to be followed by Michael Heberbrand.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Edwards and everybody else and cyclists in the crowd. I'm a cyclist and wanted to say, I'm Rick Vanderlinden, that I wanted to share the life of a cyclist. For twenty-six years, I've been a cyclist. As I went through college, as I was a kid, of course, through college, as I grew up, I got married, my wife out here, we had our honeymoon on a bike, we, well, I mean...
Yeah, we might not want to go there, but, okay.
So, raised our kids, pulled them behind us on a tandem, which is a two-seater, and a trailer, a burly trailer behind us, and they grew up in, so, our life has been cycling. And, you know, as far as what it can do for the community and for the families, it's a big positive. I've moved here six years ago and got to know, pretty much, our connection with the community has been through cycling, and so, there's good groups out here, there's the Temecula Velo, there's the Bike Shop, there's Jack's Bikes, Metta View Mountain Goats, these are all groups that ride together, probably collectively a thousand cyclists out there that are good for the community. A number of them commute to work, they use the trails that are already there, and I guess, just want to say thank you for everything you've done, because it's, you know, one of the reasons my wife and I moved here was because it's a great place for cycling, it's healthy, it's clean, you get the hills, you get the flats, you get what cyclists like. You also get the cars that we heard about, which is a scary thing, and you do get some knucklehead cyclists that do bad things on the road, and, you know, I don't want to associate with all of them, but I would say the majority of the cyclists care about the community, care about those around them, and they're doing it for health, and they're doing it for a number of good reasons. So, I ask for the support to continue to do what you're doing through, you know, HR 3978, and the second, you know, items five and twelve, both, I support both, so thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Michael Heberbrand, to be followed by Rome Walter.
Hi, Michael.
Mike Hebebrand, I'm a math teacher at Chaparral High School, been there sixteen years and lived here in the community of Temecula Valley twenty-two years. I'm here to encourage you to support the HR 3978 and also the Second Amendment that's been talked about, but I'm also here to discuss something that recently happened that very few people in Temecula know about, and that's the gold medal that Sarah Hammer just won down in Columbia. In 2007, she got her first gold medal, world champion. In 2010, she got her second gold medal, world champion. 2011, Sarah Hammer got her third gold medal. 2013, she got two gold medals, seven gold medals, seven times world champion, and just this last month, she beat Laura Trot, who beat her in the London Olympics by one point in the omnium, which is like the decathlon of track cycling. And I'm here really to, yes, promote cycling and the safe cycling around the city, extending the bike trails and the underpasses, bike trails under the freeway, but also, I'd like to encourage you to build or to erect some kind of statue to Sarah. Sarah is like the Carl Lewis of women's track cycling. She's the current world record holder in a 3,000-meter track event, and she is one of our beloved cyclists here, and I'd like to encourage you to put forth a motion to kind of seek that out, maybe erect a statue with her accomplishments on it here at City Hall. Thank you.
Rome Walter, to be followed by Heath Bernstein.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff and Residents. My name is Rome Walter, and I am here to support safe cycling in the Marietta-Temecula area. I'm a family physician, I have five children, I moved here from the northern plains of Montana, which is a lot colder than Washington DC, actually, Mr. Roberts, but mostly because of what Temecula and Marietta has to offer. It's awesome, you guys know it's awesome, I mean, to a family like mine, it's like a playland. And cycling is so good for my patients, some of them have bad knees and bad backs, and to be able to say, "Go cycling," and they know what to do because there's really trails, they don't have to compete with cars and people who are learning how to cycle and children. Obviously, it's important, and it seems to me that this, it's this general spirit of what these communities are about. Now, I can't speak to what Mr. Ernie White says concerning, you know, the attachments of the money. I'm for small government as much as anybody, and then, of course, we have my pet projects, which is cycling, everybody has those and they come to you for that. So, you know, I don't know those details, but I certainly support continuing those trails, because right now, they're still somewhat disjointed, there's still a lot of work to do, and if it takes volunteers, if it takes local money, then great, but I just want to support the city in moving that forward. Thank you.
And Heath Bernstein.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and so other city members. My name is Heath Bernstein. Three years ago, I was a victim of a hit-and-run cycling accident, and the good news is, it wasn't here. Cycling, it can be a very dangerous thing. We are soft-shelled people, right? And riding bikes next to cars going, we heard earlier about speeding, it can be very dangerous. I spent two years on crutches, I had four surgeries, it's not a very fun thing, and I was lucky to be alive. I'm in favor of safe cycling paths, and I'm grateful for all the work that you guys are doing, and I implore you to continue doing that work, and thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Thank you. Any more?
We have two under item six, and then one under item nine, and that's it for council consent.
All right, Mr. Nigar.
Yeah, on item 12, because I was waiting until the speakers finished.
Okay.
A couple of things. I just wanna speak on that. You know, about 10 days ago, I decided to go out for a ride. And I was out on the trail. And my phone rang. And who was it? Happened to be Councilmember Washington. And he wanted to talk to me about something or other. I said, hey, I'm out on the trail. I'm riding, you know, can I talk to you later? He goes, well, where are you? I told him where I was. And I said, well, why don't you get on the bike and I'll meet you at X. And for about the next hour, he leaves his house, I'm leaving mine, and we ended up meeting each other on our bikes. And from there, riding on into Old Town, where we proceeded to chit-chat about a few things, had a bite to eat, watched the Bluegrass Festival and all the tourism, which is pretty interesting. But that is the bike culture. That's just one aspect of the bike culture. So, you know, there's an event and some things that are gonna be occurring here pretty quickly. Phase one of the Bike Master Plan, we've already ran that through, and you guys participated a great deal. And part of that was that we paint sherros or shared arrows in certain areas throughout the city. And I believe that's gonna commence here in Old Town in the next, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Butler, what, in the next six weeks?
Yes, we expect to have our annual strippers come into town in April, and we're gonna work that into their.
Okay, so you're gonna see that in Old Town, and that's a significant, that's a significant improvement. Councilmember Washington and I sit on that subcommittee for the Bike and Trailways Master Plan, and we felt that it was important that, to the degree that we can, being budget-conscious as well, begin to try to implement the plan as much as possible. And then, sort of to celebrate it, kinda to both of our chagrin, but we're willing to hang ourselves out there, we're gonna have a local bike ride, in which Councilmember Washington and I are gonna lead, but hopefully you folks take the lead real quickly, okay? After we kick it off. And we're calling it, since this is the Bike and Trailways Master Plan, we're calling it the Hike and Bike with Chuck and Mike.
Oh, my gosh.
So, you're gonna see that pretty quickly. I'm sure we're gonna trot out all the information as it relates to that. But we're gonna hopefully coincide that with the sherros being painted outside. So it's all about the master plans. It's all about trying to implement them, getting a plan, and then implementing it little by little wherever we can. But with no plan, you don't implement anything. So, that's my two cents.
Mary Ann rhymes with plan.
I like it.
I can't let that go without commenting as well on item number five. I'm gonna support the item that was on our consent calendar. And I don't see making cycling available to more folks in Temecula to the detriment of anyone else. No one's being forced to ride a bicycle. And we look for ways to do many things that benefit our community. Grants, any kinds of funds that we can get to build parks, to build bikeways, to build infrastructure. It's how we build a quality community. And this is one more step. And if, I don't remember who it was, a gentleman before the last speaker, Dr. Rome Walter, call me or email me if you'd like to hear my side of that story, as it relates to how government functions here in Temecula, or any of us. I'll be happy to spend that time with you. And I won't charge you an arm and a leg, as you might if I came to see you.
Ooh.
I'm guessing. Mike is right. We had a great time. There are two moments in my life here in the valley, which started in 89, that kind of stand out. The very first race for the cure was held over at the Promenade Mall in 99. And I had the privilege of getting right at the, right at the front of the start. And I looked down the course a bit, and about 30 yards down the course, there were some photographers. And I was thinking, I'm gonna be on the front page of the newspaper, because I'm gonna be right out front as this race starts. On either side of me were a bunch of high school runners.
Yeah.
And it took all of about 10 yards for me to go from first to about last. And I had that same experience. I noticed that one of the local newspapers replayed the picture when we did the bike train with Sarah. And Zach, one of our commissioners, organized that. And Mike and I showed up, and we were all gung ho. And so were the kids. They were all excited. Here was Sarah Hammer cycling with them. And we were gonna, I don't even remember the distance, but inside of, I think of about a mile, we couldn't even see Sarah anymore. She was so far gone. And we finally showed up at the school, huffing and puffing. And Sarah was there shaking hands, shaking hands and greeting the kids. It was quite an experience. She's a phenomenal athlete and a phenomenal individual. And I'm proud to say that she's a fellow Temeculan. So, we'll figure out some way to honor her again if we can. So, kudos to you folks that are out there promoting safe cycling. Thank you.
I know she saw you, because you have one of those really long sticks on your bike with the little pointy flag at the top of it, so that you don't get lost. And those streamers hanging off your handlebars?
Yeah.
I think those went out of style quite a while back, but anyway. Okay, Madam City Clerk, we're up to item six?
Yes.
All right. And any speakers?
For consent, item six, Patrice Lines, to be followed by Ernie White.
Ms. Lines?
Good evening. Mary Ann, you stated in the debate, the last debate of 2010 election, that the city couldn't raise taxes, and you were very opposed to raising taxes and never would. Well, it is interesting, you are in support of AB 1521 and SB 69, because these bills, in fact, raise taxes by increasing our vehicle fees and attaching the increase to our property taxes. In fact, any councilperson who supports this is supporting taking the citizens' limited financial resources and supporting increased taxes to the property owner. I say no, don't no on this resolution. If you support the taxpayer, it is clear. And if you don't, you will vote yes. The city council often denies that we are, in Temecula, are ruled by regional government. Well, I have the documents here to prove, in fact, that at WR cog, Western Riverside Council of Governments, February 20th, 2014 meeting, in which Aaron Adams attended, the League of Cities Executive Committee reported as follows, SB 69 and AB 1512 would be supported and has been assigned one to one or two cities to reach out and ask for support. The League's first big issue under the new strategy of asking for only one to two cities' support is the vehicle license fee, and that's a quote. Now, all of you have been members of WR cog over the years, and our city is a member of WR cog. We have paid millions of dollars to WR cog. The way I see it, WR cog is to whom you are beholden. And they have asked you to support this resolution. They have. They have. It's right here in the minutes of the meeting. And these two bills will raise our taxes, AB 1512 and SB 69. So this seems like a planned deception that will hurt the property owner by raising his vehicle fee and adding it to his property tax. Why are you supporting bills that hurt property owners? I encourage you to vote no on AB 1512 and SB 69. So all I have to say is, don't tax me, baby.
Another speaker.
Okay, Ernie.
Ernie White.
She didn't call my name. I'm sorry. I just came up.
No, I did.
You did? Okay, thanks, Juan. I wanna talk about this bill as well. Also wanna let the doctor know, the biker, know that I like biking as well. It doesn't show, because I've been eating too much pork. I love ribs. But anyway, that HR 3978, just so the doctor knows, I support biking, especially in this town. I support biking. I think safe biking's important. I also have a horse. I support horses. I want horse trails, too. So I love trails. This is different, though. HR 3978 is not about supporting bikes. As a city, we can come together, Doc, and we can put our money together and make sure our city has the bike trails that we need. But HR 3978 goes much deeper than that. So just look it up, and you'll realize that it's not about bikes. It's about a regional government taking over our local government. Back to this bill, 1521 and 89. Talked to our Assembly Member, Melissa Melendez's office today, and they are all against this bill. As a matter of fact, every conservative in the Assembly appears to be against this bill, raising taxes, swapping vehicle license fees for property taxes. They're all against it. And it's all gonna, it's actually going to, again, create a whole nother level of government on top of what we already have. I'm still here to just, I'm just a believer that if we come together as a city, I believe that our citizens wouldn't mind paying more if we would break away from this federal government, if we would break away from Sacramento, if we would break away from WR cog and SCAG. I believe that we would all love to pay a little more if we could just become self-sufficient. Now, these two bills also support smart growth. And smart growth, again, draws us back to global warming. And again, global warming is what WR cog is all about, Western Riverside Council of Governments. We cannot be supporting smart growth, because smart growth means that we're gonna have to, again, start stacking and packing people. We're gonna start drinking toilet water. It's called Toilet to Tap. And believe it or not, our governor has already passed a bill where we can start drinking toilet water. San Diego's working on it right now. So when you flush your toilet, you're able to drink it when you go downstairs. They said it's clean, it's clear. They're gonna flash a blue light on it, and I guess a blue light will clear everything up for you. They're gonna take out all the solids, but you're gonna drink that. We're already spraying people with it. That's why you're probably sick. Look at Harveston Lake. I see people row boating in that. That's toilet water, folks. So again, I'm against all of these liberal nonsense, liberal bills, because all these liberals wanna do is continue to enslave us. Please help us break the chains of this federal government and break the chains of Sacramento. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Washington, would you like to address WR cog for us one more time?
Well, I will, Madam Mayor. I asked for the support of the council. This item's on the agenda at my request. If you go back a ways, and I'm talking about back to the days of Ray Davis's recall, there was much consternation over what initially started as the termination of VLF, vehicle license fee. A lot of that money came back to cities and principally paid for public safety within cities, or a large part of that. The deal that was struck in Sacramento, and none of us were a part of that, was that there would be backfill of those funds coming from the state's pot of property tax, thus that characterization of property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. There's been a lot of back and forth over the years. In particular, there was a policy in place leading up to the incorporation of four cities in Riverside County, cities of Eastvale, Menifee, Yarupa Valley, and Wildamar, who largely relied on what they were told from the state that they could count on for VLF. And I know for a fact that at least a couple of those cities will probably have to disincorporate if they don't get some relief from what the state ultimately did to them. And that was take away what they'd been promised in those fees, which make up a much greater percentage of their general fund budget than it does for Temecula. If I had to hazard a guess, and put staff on the spot, I'd say maybe 5% of our general fund comes from VLF. Is that inaccurate? How much? 10? 10%? So, we don't rely in a large part on VLF. But I have represented the city at WR cog, Western Riverside Council of Governments, which is a JPA, a Joint Powers Authority. It is not a governmental entity. And I have watched these cities come to life. It's a great thing when a community becomes a city, because they get the opportunity to self-govern. They get the opportunity to make the decisions that affect their community, rather than them being made at the county seat. Temecula enjoyed that in 89, Marietta in 91. It's a lot harder for cities now to incorporate and become a full-fledged city and provide the services that they'd like to provide for their citizens. So, I was asked at WR cog to support these cities, and I, along with all of the other cities that sit aside me at WR cog, are supporting likewise. I think it's a worthwhile effort, especially for those four cities mentioned. And I wanna touch on one other thing. If one were to look at our list of demands and monies sent to WR cog, they probably do add up to millions. But those are not monies that we've collected from citizens. That money is a pass-through. Most of that money goes into the transportation uniform mitigation fee. Developers, when they come to our community, are required to pay a fee for every unit, every house that they build. And that's so that the existing residents don't have to pay to build additional infrastructure. In other words, that developer is being mandated to pay for the impact that they create on our infrastructure. So they have two choices. They can write out a check to the city, and we forward that money on to WR cog to go into transportation uniform mitigation fee. Or they can build infrastructure in lieu of paying that fee. There have been some significant infrastructure contributions, if you will. The Harveston community that Lennar built paid, I think, some $32 million into infrastructure and far exceeded what they would have paid in Tumf. But that's where those dollars go. And I don't like when they're constantly mischaracterized, because WR cog, WR cog has done a great deal of good for the region and for our city. And I'm proud to represent Temecula at WR cog. And without that JPA, all of us cities would be on our own to try to fight for things that benefit the entire region. So, I'm gonna support number six.
So, Mr. Washington, let me ask you.
And that's a motion.
Okay. Is this a tax increase?
No, there's no tax.
There's no tax increase. So, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept. And is there a second?
Second.
So, a second for Mr. Roberts. And I'd like to add that, really what this is, this is another example of the government stepping in and taking money that belongs to cities. When you register your car in Temecula, Temecula has to deal with the impacts of driving. When we drive on our streets, we deal with the air quality, we deal with the infrastructure of the street, we have to repair the streets. We should be able to keep those fees. When the state steps in and takes those fees, that's not right. So, all this does is it brings those fees back to us, but it brings them back to us in the form of property tax, as it reduces, it reduces your property tax permits. That's all it is. Would you rather that the state keep the fees and do what the state does? Or would you rather keep the fees here in Temecula and allow us to do, to take care of our city? I wanna keep the fees at home. And when they took those fees away from Wildamar and Yarupa and Eastvale, the other beginning cities, it practically bankrupted them, because they were brand-new cities. beginning cities, it practically bankrupted them because they were brand-new cities and they were relying on those fees. So that's what this is. We're asking them to give those fees back to those cities in this form. It's not a tax increase. So, okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Can we do a voice vote?
Yes, we can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Okay, motion passes with Councilmember Mayor Potem Comachero absent. So that's item number six.
Did we actually vote on five already? Or were you going down the list and then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't think we-
Well, you, you made a motion on that one, so we just went ahead.
Oh, we did?
So we'll go ahead and take the balance because we still have item number nine. So I wasn't gonna take back your motion once you started it. Okay, so we have speakers on item number nine?
Number nine, yes.
Okay.
And that is Patrice Lines.
Okay. Ms. Lines? Come on down.
Well, you know, a fee is a tax. And if you increase fees, you are increasing taxes. So you are, it is an increase in taxes. So that debate's already gone on and it's been determined that a fee is a tax.
Yeah, we're on number nine now, which is the purchase of 50 HP desktop computers.
I know we are, and, yes, thank you very much. So you have bought a lot of computers lately, starting in September twenty, two, oh, 2008, excuse me, $54,000 worth of computers. April 24th, 2012, $43,000, over $43,000 worth of computers. January 24th, another $18,000 worth of computers. And then, of course, we're not including the library computers, which you buy also, but then today's computers is another $40, $41,000 worth of computers. So let's just round it up to about $1.5 million worth of computers. Now, I know that you have 150 full-time employees here with benefits. And you have about 150 projected seasonal employees that fluctuates, but those people are lifeguards and some work at the senior center, they might need a computer, and Harveston Center. However, my question is, how much of this expense is waste, fraud, and abuse? I know government has unlimited resources because they're basically our tax dollars. Please explain.
Any other speakers?
That's it for consent calendar.
All right, so if we move the balance, let's make sure that we're straight on which ones that would include. So that's going to include-
I'll move the balance.
Okay.
I rely on the city clerk.
Okay, city clerk?
Tell us what we haven't voted on.
Tell us what numbers we have left now. We've got, I know we've got.
Just nine? Nine and 12?
Five, six, nine, 12.
We just voted on five and seven.
So we have three?
Yeah.
Five, nine, and 12.
Right.
Let me-
All right. The motion to move three, five, nine, and 12. Do we get a second?
And can we do a voice vote on that also, please?
Sure, as soon as I get a second. On one. Anybody?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Roberts, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And who was the first on that?
Um, Mr. Washington? Aye and opposed no. So we have four ayes and Mayor Potem Comachero is absent. All right. We will recess the council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, the S.A.C.S. Agency, the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, Temecula Housing Authority, and the Temecula Public Financing Authority. And on to Temecula Community Services District meeting and in Mayor Potem Comachero's absence, I will call the meeting to order. We will record reflect that Edwards Nigar Roberts and Washington are here. And do we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two.
All right. So a total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the Board of Directors on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the Board of Directors on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the Board of Directors addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record for all public hearing or district business items on the agenda. A request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the Board of Directors addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. All right, could we have the first speaker, please?
The first speaker is Patrice Lines to be followed by Ernie White.
The mudslides in Washington State this week are a lethal reminder of a fast-moving natural hazard ground made unstable by heavy rainfall. Rain and river erosion that undercut the base of the length of the hillside were the cause of the Washington State disaster, possibly claiming 108 missing people. We in Temecula must be aware that the same condition exists and exists in the parcels that I will show you. Over here we have three existing parcels that you're planning to, in the future, look at. And I don't have the APN number, I'm really sorry about that, but they are considered the Shear Water, Shear Water Project. And they have not only fault lines, but liquefaction, which is quicksand. And then you can see along the both edges, there's purple, I believe, purple or blue, it looks like, blue, which will indicate to you that there's erosion on the side of the Marietta Creek. And on the side of the mountain, there's slope failure that could occur. In fact, the combination of the water and the liquefaction and the slope, and the slope failure could actually create a horrendous disaster for the 2,000 units of high density that you're proposing there in the future. And in addition to that, a plan was just approved in the Planning Commission at Miraloma and Rancho Vista. You can see it there, it's an empty property. And it is a liquefaction zone. It is surrounded by one active fault, which is the earth, which is the Elsinore Fault, and that creates quite a hazard. Then you have, the Wildamar Fault is also on the property and runs along Inez. In fact, the Elsinore Fault runs along Inez as well. So what you have is a land that's full of liquefaction, which is quicksand. So you get the shaking from the earthquake and the people will sink. So what I would like to see is your geologic study. Does the city planner have that available? I would like to see that. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. It's okay.
I just want to speak on WR cog again. WR cog, Western Riverside Council of Governments, SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, these new regional entities, and SCAG is a metropolitan monster, they are going to take over your government, ladies and gentlemen. Now, when Councilmember Washington was a part of WR cog, it was actually an organization that was actually there to build roads and help us out with roads and to connect us with the communities, to connect all the different communities throughout the county. Even though I used to think the county did that, but I guess the county doesn't do that anymore. WR cog and SCAG, let me explain. With the Association of Governments, I just got my new 91 Fast Track, that's a little thing you put in your car and you can go into the fast lane or the little toll lane. But when I looked at the baggage that it came in, it came from the Association of Governments. So it's coming from SCAG now, the Association of Governments. What that means is SCAG is already preparing to start charging us for every mile you drive. Now, let me tell you what they did. They did something really cute. In that bag, they gave me some discounts. Like if I go to SeaWorld or something, I can actually take my little Fast Track and it'll give me a discount, like 50% off. Or if I take a train, it said it'll be free for this week or that week. And so your little Fast Track now gives you discounts. But this is gonna be the trick. They're gonna give you discounts before they start charging you for every mile you drive. Because they're gonna say, hey, we gave you a discount. Now, we're just gonna charge you a couple pennies because this is what they're gonna tell you. You've done what they've asked you to do. You've stopped driving, you've started to conserve, but you're not getting the same money that you used to get from your gas taxes. So the governments aren't getting those, so now they're looking for other ways to tax you. WR cog and SCAG are looking to do this nationally, not just here in Riverside anymore. They want to expand this program nationally. This means every mile you drive, ladies and gentlemen, you'll actually have to pick roads that are cheaper because these roads will start having little signs on them on which ones are cheaper, the cheapest way to get home. If you don't have any money, your car may not start. This is all a part of smart growth. This is all a part of now WR cog. And again, when Councilmember Washington was on WR cog the first time, I don't think it was like that. I think it was different. I think, I think he really was on a transportation board. But this has grown into a monster, a monster that we've got to cut the cords with, the same with SCAG. They're the ones just pushing all of these housing elements on us. This is why we have to do the things we do. So I know that you're gonna tell your story about WR cog, I'm gonna tell mine. Why don't the people just go and Google it, WR cog, Western Riverside Council of Governments? Stop being babies, wake up, and don't depend on Washington or myself to tell you, do your own homework. Thank you very much. And God bless you, Chuck Washington.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other comments?
There are no more comments.
Mr. Washington?
I still serve the city, representing the city of Temecula at Western Riverside Council of Governments. I have, ever since 2004, I've served as chairman of the organization twice. And, well, I've been elected several times here in Temecula. That comes with some responsibility, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Then we can move on to CSD Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Service District request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number 15, Action Minutes. Number 16, First Amendment with Sherry Berry Music for concession services at the Old Town Temecula Community Theater. Can I have a motion, please?
No, move.
I have a motion, and you can press a button on that one. And I need a second, please. Push your button, Mr. Roberts, got it? And let's cast our votes. Thank you. And the item passes for with Mayor Potem Comachero absent. Any reports?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Nothing? Board of Directors, anything? No? No?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? All right, thank you. Then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
We have adjournment.
I have a motion and need a second. You guys are slow on the draw tonight. Need a second, please.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Be quiet, Councilmember Nigar. All right, then we will reconvene in the Temecula City Council meeting. Any departmental reports? Nothing? City manager, anything?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Then I will accept a motion to adjourn, Mr. Washington.
I'd like to move that we adjourn in recognition and honoring the recipients of the Medal of Honor and today being Medal of Honor Day.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for that very noble adjournment. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.